All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Welcome to our April 25th School Board meeting. Mrs. Gober, if you could call roll, please.
Mr. Lozzi.
Here.
Dr. Beck Cooley.
Here.
Dr. Donaher.
Here.
Mr. Nyman. Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
Mrs. Schenkel.
Here.
Dr. Shively.
Here.
Dr. White.
Here.
Mr. Fashionetto.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. Dr. Roy will begin tonight with some student recognition. We have a lot of students here to recognize for music and arts and what's so cool about manufacturing.
All right. Yes, thank you very much. We want to recognize this evening our participants in the PMEA District Regional Chorus and Band. But beyond that, we wanted to do this last month when it was music in the schools month, but for some reason, a lot of these kids were busy with musicals and so forth. So we waited and I'm excited to kick off the recognition actually with Jen Volpato Huntsberger, please, I'm come on down with the Freedom Choir. And we're going to have them perform. That is correct for me, yes. June 10th, I'll be at Madison Square Garden. That was awesome. Thank you. I know I sang that song a lot in my dorm room. Did not sound like that. Fantastic. Incredible. Now that's like, you don't get a lot in return, you know, there's no pay for school board members or volunteer, but when you get that, it's all worth it, right? So that was awesome. So if I could have, is Miss Sage here? I'm not sure if she's here this evening. I think she had a, she was at something else. But if Mike Moran come down and Jen, if you can come back down, we'd like to recognize the students from Freedom who were, who selected to participate in the PMEA Festivals. Dr. Silva has certificates and I'll recognize the name. Ms. Moran, good to see you. Thanks for being here. We'll recognize the names of a few Freedom Students and then we'll recognize the Liberty Students who similarly were recognized. So Alec Rubbery, sorry, pronounce it. Rubbery, sorry. Alec Rubbery, PMEA District 10 Band. Congratulations. Oh, I was gonna ask Emily if you wanted to go around to help hand out the certificates and then you could stay up there when we get around to the other part too. Yes. We're doing what's so cool about manufacturing recognition soon. So we'll have Emily. Okay. And then our second, Mary Jo Rakowski, PMEA District 10, District 10 Chorus. You dressed so nicely for this recognition. Thank you. Dr. Silva. Mrs. Schenkel has her certificate for you. And finally, Sophia Trembler, PMEA District 10 Chorus and Region 5 Chorus. Mrs. Kleimer, are you gonna get, grab a picture of the group? Congratulations. Let's get a picture of our wonderful students. Thank you. Now we'll recognize our students from Liberty High School who received similar recognition. I think Mr. William Lennox, our Liberty Assistant Band Director. Mr. Lennox here, here he comes. I didn't recognize you without your big, you know, uniform on. Yeah, you're big. Yeah. So first, from Liberty High School, David Broskowski, District Band. I should mention, Mr. Frank has a class this evening, so he was unable to be here. Christopher Janaris, District Band, District Orchestra and Region Orchestra. Congratulations. Casey Huey, District Orchestra. Not to be outdone, Jack Huey, District Band, District Orchestra, Region Band and All-State Concert Band. Is Mr. Huey here? Oh, there he is. We know where their musical talent comes from. Anna Luzzuski, District Band, District Orchestra, Region Band, Region Orchestra, All-State Concert Band and All-National Concert Band. Anna. And she's competing for all uni- no, I'm kidding. Emma Listen, District Band and Region Band. Michelle Luiza. Is Michelle here? All right, come on down. As it turns out, Michelle is not just does the beatbox, if that's the right phrase, but he is one of only six composers honored in the Composer's Program at the All-State Conference. Her composition, "Petty Grievances," was performed by the Westchester University Wind Ensemble. Michelle, amazing. Congratulations. Our next Liberty Student, Benjamin Pfeffer, Fever, apologize. Pfeffer? Benjamin Pfeffer, not here? Okay, thank you. Benjamin, also District Orchestra and Region Orchestra. And our last Liberty Student, Arineah Kwan, District Band. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks to our band and choral directors for all of the time that they put in as well. So now, we would like to move to what's so cool about manufacturing. You remember, well, you may not remember, but we may remember that we showed the video, the kind of the composite video of the, our middle schools competition. They are, all four of our schools participated again in the What's So Cool About Manufacturing Contest. The annual contest started locally in Lehigh Valley and now is spread across the state for a number of years. And the purpose is to raise awareness for what manufacturing is all about. Yes, thank, I forgot to mention, you're free to go. Thank you. The, we want to recognize the students who participated when the whole idea of the videos is to match schools, middle schools with manufacturers to produce exciting videos. And to, that will then be online and go out to the community to show that manufacturing in today's world is high-tech, clean and really an entirely different world than we might think of in manufacturing in the past. So we're gonna share the videos. Marie, you have it going. We'll crane our necks.
Lehigh Heavy Forge, with origins dating back to 1887 from the Bethlehem Iron Company, who we know as Bethlehem Steel, was originally created to provide for the US Navy. Lehigh Heavy Forge specializes in taking large iron ingots that can weigh up to 300 tons and forms them into parts for a variety of industries, ranging from national defense, marine equipment, nuclear energy generation, mining and specialty rolls, all of which have a trickle-down effect into our everyday lives. Using their 4,000 and 10,000 ton presses, 20 large CNC machines and other industry-secret methods, Lehigh Heavy Forge can make all of your large metal needs. But what is so cool about manufacturing?
What's so cool about manufacturing? Holy cow!
It's the history!
There's machines in there that are overhired, you know, like before you did.
It's the people!
As long as everyone works hard, nobody wants to see anybody fail. Everyone's here to help each other.
It's the best!
What I enjoy most about being an engineer here at Lehigh Heavy Forge is the extremely large parts that we make that are really unique to anywhere here in North America or even in the world. We have a 10,000-ton press here, which is the largest in North America.
It is awesome!
Truly enjoy what I do. Very passionate about what I do. Working here at Lehigh Heavy Forge for going on 14 years has been fantastic. And to me, there's no better feeling than watching a forging leave on either a rail car or a truck and know that I have touched that piece in some way, shape or form. Gives me personal satisfaction.
The coolest thing is that you are part of making sure that this thing goes through smooth and the customer gets what they need. That there's no better satisfaction to be part of something big like that. It's that, that's the coolest thing that I can think of.
Brockle Middle School earned the Most Outstanding Educational Value Award for, for that video. And I'm going to ask the Brockle students to come down now. Dr. Silva has the certificates. I'll ask Mr. Horlick to come down. And Mr. Loudenslager's here. Mr. Loudenslager was a teacher-coach for the project, so they'll come on down. And we have a couple of the students with us. I'll read several students. I'll read their, all of the names of the students, so come on down. So working, and one of the constraints again this year was that the students weren't able to go onsite because when these were made, we're still dealing with the higher COVID numbers and masking and so forth. So we didn't have the full advantage of being able to go on the job sites unfortunately, but they still did a wonderful job. So we have Benjamin Brandt, Kyle Brandt, if you can, if you're here, raise your hand if I say your name, Javon Cologne, Angel Cruz, Kyla Ogalevy, Haven Ramos, Tyler Shabaz, Zoe Sabrinsky. So congratulations and congratulations, Mr. Loudenslager, Mr. Horlick. There's a lot of work that goes into that. And really, how many of us have driven by Lehigh Forge? So many times. And now we know more about what it does. So thank you team very much. Thank you. And now, we will show the second video, we have the second video, correct, for Northeast Middle School, which won the Most Outstanding Creativity Award. See the video and then we'll invite kids down.
What if you had the power to control light? What started as an idea for a self-safe dimming switch developed into a worldwide lighting control company. Lutron produces energy-efficient lighting and window shade systems that work with the sun, as well as smart lighting you can control remotely for your home. With new ideas on the horizon, Lutron is looking for skilled and talented individuals to transform how we light our lives.
The one word I would use to describe Lutron is innovative. We are constantly launching new products. We are redefining ourselves, the way our customers interact with our products. We look for a lot of things in our employees. We value flexibility, hands-on skills, problem-solving and the willingness to try new things. Manufacturing is cool. They get to work with lasers, robots, really great people. Every day, we get to take these tiny little pieces that have a very limited use, put them together, and the next thing you know, we have something that can create magic.
A teacher of mine while attending LCTI inspired me to get into the manufacturing side of things. I started off entering Lutron as a technical assistant. They helped fund me to go back to school for an industrial automation degree, which has led me to this position as an equipment support technician. I've been to plays on Broadway and Madison Square Garden to watch the Knicks play. You see how the lighting plays a big part of the mood in the room.
I like working for Lutron because of their culture. They treat you like family. Lighting is important because it lights up our world. Without lighting, we'd be in the dark.
The panels and product that help lighten the houses and the businesses for millions of customers all over the world. One of the Lutron products that I personally use is a set up. I was able to turn off and on my lights at home when I was overseas in North Africa. Lutron is a great place to work. It's a company that takes care of people. Anything around us, it comes from manufacturing. And so manufacturing is the future.
How would you pray for the future?
Look at that. Work earned the Most Outstanding Creativity Award. Like that, Dr. Canonis, Principal and Ms. Shook, Teacher Advisor, Teacher Coach, come on down and the students from Northeast Middle School. All right, we'll hand you a certificate. Well, I'll call you in order of the certificates. Zachary Bantari, Tanner Brown, Laura Dunham, Carl Fair. Step on up when you hear your name. Emma Grandin, Lila McLaren, Carter Rohrbach, Nicholas Schenkel, Brielle Silvoi, Angelie Vasquez. Congratulations. Northeast has a long history. Long history of being very successful in this. And I thank Ms. Shook for her work along with these great students. Congratulations. They're going to States. I forgot that. When is, when is that? May 18th, which is, you know, not the first time you've been to States, right, Ms. Shook? And we've, and we've had great success there in the past. So congratulations and good luck at States.
There you have it. All right. Thank you, Dr. Roy. Congratulations to all our students who were recognized tonight. Next up on the agenda is courtesy to the Florida visitors. Anybody wishing to speak on agenda items only, there'll be a second courtesy to the floor at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, then we will move into our reports for our student representatives. Tonight, we will begin with Liberty High School and Ms. Harper.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Roy, Mr. Fashionetto, members of the School Board and everyone in attendance tonight. As the weather is getting warmer, Liberty is getting busier. This past week was all college week at Liberty. Throughout the week, representatives from colleges in the area hosted panels regarding college experience, college athletics and types of post-secondary schools. Members of the armed forces spoke to the students as well about considering the military when doing their post-secondary planning. College Fair was hosted in the Memorial Gym on Thursday last week, where students could talk to representatives from over 20 colleges about what their school has to offer. The National Honor Society recently selected the officers for their upcoming school year. So congratulations to everyone who was selected. NHS will be hosting a blood drive this Wednesday. Students over the age of 16 should check their emails for more information. Despite the immense challenges that the club faced, this year's mini-thon was a success. The club was able to raise over $22,000 for the kids and they had a blast singing karaoke, doing sumba, learning to line dance and much more at the main event on April 2nd. Huge thank you to Mrs. Beer for leading the club for so many years and thank you for your hard work and dedication. You will truly be missed. Thank you to our captains who worked hard to coordinate this event and thank you to everyone who donated to the cause. Prom tickets will be sold tomorrow and Wednesday after school in the cafeteria, as well as on May 3rd, 4th, 10th and 11th. The price increases from $90 to $95 on May 10th and 11th, so get your tickets as soon as possible. Check your emails for more information and be sure to contact your advisors or class officers with any questions. Seniors, senior supportive voting is now open until 3:00 PM on Wednesday. Check your email for the link, then submit your choices. Gear books can be purchased now through May 20th, so students be sure to check your emails for the appropriate forms for Mrs. Gilley. Now on to sports. Liberty recognized some of our phenomenal senior hurricane athletes this past Friday with our annual signing day ceremony. Congratulations to all of our athletes for their accomplishments and best of luck in college. Boys tennis finished their season with a record of 6 and 1. They beat Freedom 5 to 2 in the regular season and our team won the East Penn Conference as well. District singles are this week, then district teams are the week of May 2nd, with district doubles occurring the following week of May 9th. Best of luck to them. The track team won their events against Whitehall, Becca and Central and they were invited to compete at a tournament at Chippensburg as well. Congrats to them. Boys volleyball won their matches against Pocono Mountain East and West, Becca, Deeriff and Allen. Congratulations to them. Now on to music. The Grenadier Band held their band concert in Liberty's Memorial Gym on April 8th and 9th. With this year being the first since COVID for many activities, the band truly enjoyed performing and putting on our first traditional indoor concert since 2019. Our concert featured previous directors such as Kevin Long, Ron Sherry and Gregory McGill, as well as select vocalists from our choir and Mrs. Warginski on keyboard. Congratulations to our seniors on their last band concert and congratulations to Mr. Alan Frank, Mr. William Lennox and all the Grenadiers for putting on a great concert. This Friday, the Liberty High School Choir, along with the orchestra, had their spring concert. This Friday, the Liberty High School choir, along with the orchestra, had their spring concert and pops concert. We celebrated our evening of the arts, which also featured over 400 pieces of artwork from our very own Liberty students. Pre-concert entertainment was performed by select members of the choir, which featured various genres of music and showcased our students' talents. We also officially announced the arrival of our brand new Steinway piano, which was played for the public for the first time on the Liberty stage Friday night. Lastly, a huge congratulations to Mrs. Julie Wajinski, Mr. Ross McCary, Mr. Alan Frank, Liberty's orchestra, and our choir for an amazing concert, which can be viewed on BASDPA on YouTube if you missed it. Although Liberty Theater's production of The Sound of Music has closed, we are very excited for the Freddie nominations and Freddie Awards. Freddie Award nominations will be announced on May 12th, and the awards will be on May 30th at the State Theater. Liberty Theater would also like to give a huge congratulations to Freedom on their production of curtains. Freedom put on an amazing show, and we're looking forward to seeing you all at the Fright. That is all from Liberty. I hope you have an amazing rest of your month. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Stoffler, and a report from Freedom. We have our alternate here, Ms. Florian.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Fashionetto, Dr. Roy, members of the school board, and all of those in attendance tonight. March 10th has brought new beginnings as Freedom High School commenced the fourth and final marking period of the 2021-2022 school year. The students received the opportunity to explore new classes according to their interests and meet new teachers and friends last week. I would say the fresh start was a success. Last week, juniors and sophomores had an amazing opportunity of attending our college fair with over 30 schools plus real estate and cosmetology schools. As juniors completed a survey on novyons, they could reflect on their experience and get to think about what will factor into their upcoming college application season. Not only in, but also outside of the classroom, these students continue to demonstrate excellence. Congratulations to Braylon Moore for being awarded 2022 Lineman of the Year by the National Football Foundation and College Hall of Fame Lehigh Valley Chapter. Good news spreads from football to volleyball as Elena Roman and Elizabeth Barnes were recognized among the best in the nation by JVA for their dominance in volleyball. April 1st started with a home run as the guidance department organized a successful fundraiser tailored around the opening day of baseball. The staff and students raised over $1,100 to support UNICEF and children in Ukraine by donating a dollar to wear their favorite Major League Baseball team attire. The National Honor Society resumed their annual egg conference children and grandchildren of BASD employees. It took place on Saturday, April 4th. A round of applause goes to the students who made contributions for the event to be possible. Our spring sports teams have been dominated this reason with amazing records. Boys lacrosse is 10-0, girls lacrosse is 8-2, baseball is 6-4, and boys volleyball is 8-5. We wish them the best of luck and hope not only the teams, but the senior members finish their careers strong. Junior student council officers are excited as prom ticket sales go up. They planned for a prom at Arts Quest on Friday, May 13th from 6:00 to 10:00 PM with the theme of masquerade. They're excited at the chance of a normal prom ever since 2019. Lastly, this past weekend, Freedom High School Theater Company was back and better than ever with live theater in their auditorium at max capacity for the first time in three years. The performance of curtains was a hit, and all the students involved are immensely proud of all they could accomplish. Big things go to everyone who came out to the show and supported us. The theater company feels honored to be a part of something so big with the help of our directors, Justin Ammon, Natalie Parker, and Denise Parker. We truly cannot be the company we are without the support we have. That is all for the month of April as students work hard preparing for the AP exams in May, and seniors enter the last couple of weeks before graduation. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful evening.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Florian. Next up on our agenda, we have two meeting minutes for approval, the March 21st special board meeting and the March 28th budget workshop. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
This is Patrick, Dr. Shively. I misspoke. I said special board meetings. Just plain old school board meeting on March 21st. Any questions on those? Any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one set of committee meetings to approve. That was the April 11th finance committee meeting. Motion to approve those. Mrs. Schenkel, second, Dr. Donaher. Comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries as well. I need a motion to approve the finance items there, 701 through four on the agenda. Dr. Shively, second, Ms. Patrick. Questions or comments on the finance items? Seeing none, Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board, please, on 701 through 704.
Dr. White? Yes. Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes.
All motions pass eight zero.
Thank you, Mrs. Gober. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session. We discussed litigation and personnel. Dr. Roy, anything to report?
I don't have an additional report.
All right. Any unfinished business from any board member? Seeing none, we will go on to the facility items, which is 1101 through 1104. Dr. Beckley, motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mrs. Patrick, thank you. Questions or comments on those four facility items? Seeing none, Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board on 1101 through 1104.
Dr. White? Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes.
All motions pass eight zero.
Thank you. Dr. Shively, motion to approve the curriculum items 1201 through 1203?
So moved.
Second on that. Mrs. Schenkel, thank you. Questions or comments on those items? Seeing none, Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board on 1201 through 1203, please.
Dr. White? Yes. Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes.
All motions pass eight zero.
Thank you. Next up, motion to approve the finance items 1301 through 1306. Mrs. Patrick, second. Dr. Donaher. Only comment there, 1306 was blank. Last time we saw it, you see the bid awards there for the paper having filled in pricing. Other than that, any questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board on 1301 through 1306.
Dr. White? Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes.
All motions pass eight zero.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Patrick, motion to approve the human resource items 1401 and 1402.
So moved.
Is there a second on that? Mrs. Schenkel, thank you. Questions or comments on those? Seeing none, Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board, please, on 1401 and 1402.
Dr. White? Yes. Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes, with regret and best wishes on A1.
Dr. Donaher, yes, I'm sorry. I had to write too many notes. Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes to all with, no, I can't do that. Yes to all, Mrs. Gober.
All motions pass eight zero.
Thank you. What a relief, right? Just obviously, you saw A1 there that we joked about. Mrs. Gober's upcoming retirement in August, there'll be much more to say in the future, but certainly, a lot of thanks and a lot of congratulations on it. Pretty impressive 12-year tenure. I reminded the board via email a couple of weeks ago. If you remember where we were when Mrs. Gober first walked in the door, it's quite a different place in the fact that you decided to stay for 12, I wouldn't stay 12 days, frankly. Really incredible and certainly a debt of gratitude to where we are now from where we came, that we can actually in budget situations where we're spending money on educational programs and not spending money to plug holes and keep the ship falling apart. So thank you very much, and I'll say, I'll say more in the last meeting.
If I could also mention that we hired the new assistant principal, the board did, appointed a new assistant principal with that vote. Ms. Kamisha Stewart will join us as assistant principal at Nitchman Middle School. She's here next to Dr. Mays tonight, so if you could just give a wave, that's all. Say hello. There's some family members in the back. Yeah, it's all right. Congratulations and welcome.
All right. That will bring us on to our reports of the committees. The first is Northampton Community College. Dr. Donaher, you can take that one.
Thank you, Mr. Fashionetto. The Northampton Community College Board of Trustees met on Thursday, April 14th. We had an overview of the Student Affairs Department by Dr. Cedric Harris, an overview of the Monroe Campus by Allison Fitzpatrick, and an overview of DEI by Dr. Robert Robinson, and then academic policy 3.05, an academic program review by Dr. Karen Beers. We also had a review of the Treasurers Report and Enrollment Comparisons by Jim Dunleavy, a capital budget update by Mr. Dunleavy as well, an overview of the finance and operations and facilities update from Bill Smith. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Dr. Donaher. Bethel Mary Vocational Technical School, Mrs. Schenkel.
I was actually not present at this meeting as I was at the What's So Cool About Manufacturing Award Ceremony, but I did my due diligence, and I can tell you what was talked about. Basic meeting information that they did. The annex roof is going to need some restoration work. A couple of bids were awarded for things like boiler replacement and chiller replacements. The school calendar was approved and some new occupational advisory committee members were approved. If anybody else who was there would like to add anything or I missed anything, I think that. Oh, and I did want to mention that I was able to attend a luncheon for some of the Skills USA students, really amazing students that had awards and are continuing. And it's really great to see that six of the students at the VOTAC.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mrs. Schenkel. Dr. Shively, a report for the IU?
We last met on March 23rd, and most of the meeting was taken up with a discussion of contract negotiations for teachers. One of the big issues in the Colonial IU system is teacher shortage. Even after the pandemic, many teachers have left and have there has been enough absences that some classrooms have had to temporarily close down. And to that end, to that end, a number of parents were there for comment about the difficulties of sort of trying to, with children who are on the spectrum or have intellectual disabilities, how difficult it is to try to do online education with them, and that it's absolutely crucial that they are in the classroom. And so they are looking for solutions to attract more teachers to remain in the Colonial IU system. The next meeting will be this Wednesday, April 27th. Before that meeting, actually, from 5:30 to 6:30 at Colonial Academy will be a celebration of the 50th anniversary of the Colonial IU 20. There will be all kinds of exciting things going on, but also the VOTAC's food truck will be providing food for that activity as well. So everybody is invited. That's an open activity up at Colonial Academy this Wednesday, 5:30 to 6:30.
All right, great. Thank you. Task force for excellence through equity, Mr. Allozy or Mrs. Schenkel is over to meeting.
Yeah, I have a couple things. So this was the first meeting that was chaired, or I shouldn't say chaired, but where Dr. Draper and Mr. Fontanaz got to walk through their roles. And we were grateful. Dr. Roy was able to introduce them to a room full of community members. Meeting was very well attended. A lot was covered. One of the things that was shared was a very informative presentation on how the work that has been done thus far with the equity policy will be moving forward through the equity audit. And there were four pillars I had to look through and grab my notes. Looking at the audit through the lenses of access, discipline, achievement, and funding, and particularly how we're going to be using title funding and other grant monies to do the work of that office and make sure that we're getting opportunities across to our students. Couple takeaways from the meeting during the meeting, which I thought was a phenomenal exercise, given the amount of people that were there, that the folks in the room were asked to give their honest opinions and state their expectations of the office and of Dr. Draper and of Mr. Fontanaz. And very well put, very well received. And then after the meeting, they did ask for stakeholders to give them information on an input form. And I don't know if that data's been fully collected as of yet, but very informative meeting, very well ran. And it was a good time. No snacks.
Like just that, if I could just add that, I think we talked about doing that presentation at the May Curriculum Committee meeting. So the whole board, because Dr. Draper, Mr. Fontanaz were able to basically lay out the game plan for the office operations and the key areas and so forth. So they put up, you know, a frame, we like frameworks, you know, Dr. Silva and I like frameworks. So put up the framework around how the work will go forward, and it would be great for the whole board to see that. So we'll add that to the curriculum agenda.
All right, sounds good. PSBA report today was advocacy day at the Capitol. I know I was not able to attend. Dr. Roy was there with some other folks from all across the state, meeting with legislators, talking about the budget, equity funding, those kind of issues. Coming up in May, nominations will open for several elected positions throughout the association. So keep an eye out for that. I'll be sharing that when it comes. If you've ever considered getting involved, now would be a good time to do so. Also, the continuing Ed platform continues to get built out with some new course offerings, so mypsba.org. If you don't know your login information, Mrs. Gober can get that for you, but there's a lot of good stuff on there. Even if you don't need training, there's just a lot of good refresher courses. Most of them are somewhere between like eight and 20 minutes. There's nothing that's going to bog you down for an hour at a time. So really good lengths. Wednesday night, Dr. Roy and I will be presenting at a PSBA workshop, a regional workshop that's being hosted at Nitchman. So you're welcome to come out for that. If you could please register, I can send the link out again tomorrow. It's come out a couple of times. Talking about leadership through the past two years and trying times and how boards and superintendents work together to really put forth a positive effort for both the district and the community. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout for that. That's Tuesday night from 6:00 to 8:00 over at Nitchman. Assuming the library, Mr. Mays. All right, awesome. Wednesday, did I say? Not tomorrow. I won't be there tomorrow. Wednesday. Hope it's not tomorrow. No, it's Wednesday night. Thank you. And then lastly, if you saw your daily edition today or saw the news, you saw that Secretary Ortega has resigned as PA's Education Secretary. And his appointment was noted Eric Haggerty, serving as the acting secretary, and I would imagine that will remain acting because his term obviously coincides with the governor's term, which is wrapping up at the end of the year. So wish Secretary Ortega well, and hopefully Secretary Haggerty will have some positive influence in the remaining months of the governor's term in office. The foundation board met last Tuesday. I was in class and unable to attend. However, I can tell you, as you, I'm sure you have heard, Mrs. Bailey has tendered her resignation. We're working through a job description. We're going to meet again tomorrow night to come up with a full job description for the new position that will fall exclusively under the foundation. If you recall, there's been a split in the past of the foundation and the district kind of partnering as far as who would the employee is, but going forward, it makes sense that the foundation employs the executive director, which is a full-time position 100%. Obviously, everything the foundation does and the foundation exists to support the school district will still continue to partner with them on that. But this way, the executive director will just simply report to the trustees of the foundation. So if you know of anybody or you have a connection on a good executive director, Mrs. Bailey has really put the gears in motion and set some high expectations and has met financially every one of them. And as you may have heard, our goals continue to go up, looking to raise a half a million dollars a year in the near future, and no reason to believe we won't do that, but we need a good, good quality leader to continue the momentum that's been put in place the past couple of years. So more to come on that. Mrs. Schenkel, has there been a Wells Committee meeting?
There has not, but our next one is coming up on Tuesday, May 17th.
All right, great. Thank you. Next up, new miscellaneous business. Anything new that anyone wants to share? Seeing none. Courtesy of the floor, anybody wishing to address the board on anything? Yes, sir. Come on down to the microphone, please, and just give us your name and address for the record. Yes, sir. Come on down to the microphone, please, and just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Fair, eighteen twenty-two Monocacy Street, city of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
I speak this evening about a series of concerns, but also potential solutions for a growing obstacle to the continued and future success of public schools in the state of Pennsylvania. While myriad issues and shortcomings contribute to these roadblocks, I believe the hiring process and requirements for new teachers is a significant obstacle standing in the way of our evolution into the twenty-first century. Our schools and our classrooms are suffering from a hidden crisis fueled in part by our pandemic and the nearly unconscionable funding practices of charter schools, but also by the shortage of not just those willing to teach, but those qualified to hold the position. Mandatory and universal teacher certification is cumbersome, counterproductive, and archaic. I am a graduate of Boston University, a veteran, an Arabic linguist, a former city of Bethlehem police officer, a published writer, and a former associate professor of creative writing at Lehigh University. I'm a willing teacher, but by state standards, I am unqualified. Instead, I served as a teaching assistant at Northeast Middle School, working in their special education department. The teachers who serve the students at Northeast are impressive and inspiring, but there are not enough of them, and there is not a large enough pool to replace them when they need to depart for illness, convalescence, or professional or personal reasons. I've walked the halls of Northeast and watched as already overburdened teachers are burdened even further, but taking on more responsibilities because of policies that prevent someone like me from stepping in help. And the shortage, of course, affects the entire district. I am not alone. I still have connections and contacts in the law enforcement community, the veteran community, professionals in higher education who would willingly step in to fill a full-time public educational position if not for the outdated and cumbersome process placed before them. Enrolling in a state-approved certification program would cost me two years and thirty thousand dollars. For that, no graduate degree is offered, just a single certification and a single subject. For those with solid and stable professional careers is impractical and unreasonable. I do not advocate a direct hire process, but establishing an entry program for professionals like me, putting us under the guidance and tutelage of qualified teacher for a year and some sort of probationary status without having to endure the cost of an arbitrary certification could open the door to a pool of personnel that are currently deterred or dissuaded. As I conclude, it is worth noting that my son, who you honored here this evening, is an eighth grader at Northeast Middle School. My wife and I are graduates of Liberty High School. My parents both spent their entire teaching careers in the district. I am permanently and passionately invested in the public schools here in Bethlehem. But I have also watched as my son has lost a year of science education because of the teacher shortage at Northeast. The school was unable to find a qualified long-term substitute, and though I often sat in class alongside him, I lacked the suitable requirements to step in and help, at least officially. I believe charter schools in Pennsylvania have much to answer for, and I believe they remain a primary source of significant financial barriers for the district, but their existence and potential future growth has roots in a public system that is too slow to react. It is not an overstatement to say that the teacher shortage in the Bethlehem public schools failed my son this year, along with many of his fellow classmates. How much longer will families like mine, no matter how invested in public education we may be, tolerate this failure before we or they begin to search for alternatives? The crisis is not coming. It arrived years ago, and the window to act is closing. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anyone else courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, moving on to open forum. Anybody have any items for open forum? Other than just one comment based off what Speaker just said, charter schools in Pennsylvania only need to have seventy-five percent of their teachers have a certification, so there is a flexibility there that's not afforded to traditional public schools. Take that for what it is. I know a lot of our local charter schools have a hundred percent or majority certified, but there is leeway and flexibility given to the charter schools to have only seventy-five percent certified, where public schools are required to have a hundred percent certified, and being someone who decided at thirty-eight years old to jump off a bridge and spend the thirty thousand and go back to school to become a teacher, it is a cumbersome and burdened process. So I a hundred percent appreciate what you just said and really would truly appreciate if there'd be some easier way to do it to get people back into the classroom that are looking to go into education, that are in second career opportunities. Yeah, open forum. Anything else? Mr. Allozy?
I'll just say that I agree with everything that you just said.
Anybody else? Open forum? Nothing else? Then I'll just remind you, we do not have a meeting next week on May second. Our next meeting is on Monday, May ninth. Will be our first two committee meetings for the month of May. And if that is all, motion to adjourn. Mrs. Patrick, second, Dr. Donaher, all in favor? Anyone oppose?